Meeting to order for the Board of Education for Wednesday, February 20th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. Mr. Aho, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Felber?
Here.
Mr. Solera?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Here.
Mr. Curtis is absent.
Yes. Thank you. If you could all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Where's our flag? Oh, there it is. Where's our flag?
It's missing.
Here. Alright, we're gonna use the Ohio flag. For six years, it's been right there, I swear.
It's gone.
That's actually quite funny. People at home don't know what we're talking about. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Bennett.
Unfortunately, I have to make the announcement that due to fire codes, oh, maybe you've heard this announcement before, as people clear, we have to keep the aisles clear, so if there's an empty seat next to you, if you can raise your hand, perhaps. So there's a seat down front, you know, but thank you. They do come from the fire department to check, so. Again, good evening, my name is Rob Felber. It's my honor to be the president of the Twinsburg School Board. This again is the meeting for Wednesday, February 28th, 7:00 PM. Just a couple of brief things, for those that might not have seen yet, the board administration did determine that we are once again having to put a renewal levy on the board. It's a levy that's been on the books for many years. It is a renewal, it is no new taxes, but it does represent about eight and a half percent of our operating budget, so it is very, very crucial to our function. I do want to thank the Twinsburg Chamber of Commerce for their early endorsement of that levy. And I also wanted to make an announcement, there's flyers in the back, the Blue Ribbon Schools Committee is having a pancake breakfast on March 9th, that's a Saturday, from 9:00 to 1:00 PM. Seven dollars adults, four dollars students and senior citizens, kids under two eat free, and everybody can eat as much as they like. It isn't all you can eat, so, again, flyers on the back there. And with that, I'm gonna end probably one of the shortest reports ever, and turn the meeting over to Superintendent Powers for the superintendent's report.
That was for chance.
That was fine.
Well, good evening, Mr. Felber, Board of Education. Good evening, it's great to see everyone here this evening. It's always great to celebrate our students, and we have so many things to celebrate. And my report today is gonna talk about a couple of major things that we're celebrating, so please bear with me before we get to our presentation of our students exactly. Board of Education, I'm delighted to share with you that we have officially been notified that Wilcox Primary School has, the preschool has once again been designated as a five-star Step Up to Quality preschool. So congratulations. We've been preparing a media release, so I'm gonna read a part of it to you this evening, I apologize to reading to you, but it says that Step Up to Quality is a research-based initiative established to improve the quality and care of education for young children ages birth through the age of five. The steps are based on national research, identifying the program's standards that lead to improved outcomes for children. High-quality early learning that has been shown to narrow the achievement gap by improving kindergarten readiness, increasing third-grade reading outcomes, and raising high school graduation rates. The Wilcox preschool team has been preparing and working hard toward a five-star re-designation since the beginning of the year. Teachers and instructional assistants embrace personal and classroom goal-based setting based off student data and survey results. Staff attend professional development opportunities in order to provide students with the best and most current educational pedagogy. Student learning is continually monitored through the cyclical nature of instruction, teaching, assessing, and adjusting instruction. The Wilcox teachers embrace and foster close communication with students' parents as well as community partners to allow students to access the curriculum to their greatest potential. As a result, our youngest Tigers demonstrate kindergarten readiness skills at their highest developmentally appropriate level. The preschool five-star Step Up to Quality designation represents the staff and community's continued dedication and commitment to early learning within our community. With over 130 applicants for our 2019-20 preschool programs, that's for next year, so we're gonna have a waiting list. Our families see and want to be a part of our five-star program to help prepare the children for kindergarten. The Wilcox Primary School preschool team, under the direction of Ms. Lynn Villa and Mr. Scott Asti, are to be highly commended for all their hard work and dedication to our youngest Tigers and to their families. So if you please join me in congratulating Wilcox once again. Congratulations, Lynn and Scott, we're so delighted and proud of you and of your entire staff. That is quite an accomplishment, re-designation of the Step Up to Quality five-star, so quite a star for us and very, very proud of the staff over at Wilcox Primary School. Board of Education, just another moment to thank all of our parents and staff members, administrators, and Board of Education members for participating in our district's strategic planning process. Following last month's feedback session, our action teams are back at work refining their goals, strategies, and action steps, and conducting a benefit analysis of their plans. We look forward to finalizing the work of our action teams in the month of March and then formally presenting their work to Board of Education during an upcoming work session this spring. I'm gonna ask Mrs. Browning to put a picture up on the screen here. Yesterday was a fantastic day over at Twinsburg High School because yesterday was the winter sports and fall sports signing day for many of our athletes, and wanna congratulate the students who are athletes in the class of 2019, who signed just yesterday to continue their academic and athletic careers at the following universities and colleges of their choice. It's gonna be hard to see, but this is going from left to right up on the screen. First, we have Jack Bennet, who is one of our soccer team members, he's going to Wittenberg University, and Jack is the son of John and Denise Bennet. Angela DeFabio, who is the daughter of one of our other members, Angela DeFabio and Jamie DeFabio, she's going as a cross-country athlete, and she'll be studying at the University of Mount Union. Caleb East, who is a fantastic bowler, he is going to be studying at Lindenwood University, and he's the son of Daryl and Christie East. Colin Martin is a fantastic swimmer, and he's going to be studying at the University of Finley, and he's the son of Dean and Grace Martin. Mary Leskovic is going for softball to the North Central College, and she's the daughter of Dave and Rita Leskovic. Paige Plata is also going for softball, and she's going to Penn State, and she's the daughter of Glenn and Candy Plata. Gilbert Campbell, he is going to be playing football for Marietta College, and he's the son of Delano and Monica Campbell. Brandon Kreszek is going to be playing football at Baldwin Wallace University, and he's the son of Brian and Ginger Kreszek. Aiden Malincheck is one of our football stars, and he's going to Ohio University, and he is the son of Russell and Mara Malincheck. And finally, on the right-hand side there, that's Trey Radford, he's one of our football players, he's going to Youngstown State University, and he is the son of Johnny and Michelle Radford. So we are so delighted that these youngsters, student athletes, have now signed to go on to college, and they have a passion for athletics, and will be following their dreams over to the college level, and we congratulate Dr. Hebert, we congratulate Mr. Fantone for a wonderful program, and of course, student athletes and their parents, it was a wonderful morning yesterday, and quite a memory for the parents and for the kids as well, so we were just so happy about that. Also, although the winter sports season is winding down, there's still a lot of great action to be had in swimming. I mentioned Colin Martin up there, he'll compete Friday and Saturday at the state championship meet in Canton in the 100 butterfly and 100 freestyle. He will swim Friday morning around 9:00 and Saturday in the late afternoon if he qualifies on Friday, so we wish Colin the best of luck. In gymnastics, Brett Purcell and Callie Pyro have both qualified to compete at this Saturday's district meet at West Yaga High School, with times to be determined. In bowling, Caleb, who's up there on the screen, will compete in the district tournament this Sunday at Roseland Lanes at noon, for a chance to qualify for the state tournament, which will be March 8th and 9th in Columbus. Wrestling, our team is competing in the sectional tournament this Saturday at Kemston, and with qualifiers moving on to the district meet next weekend at North Canton Hoover. Hockey, although the hockey season is over for our hockey team after losing to Aurora in the OHSA tournament, the team had a great time this season, just a great group of guys and girls, and we congratulate them on a wonderful season. Our basketball, girls' team plays Bedford at Bedford tomorrow night at 7:00 PM in the sectional championship game, and if they beat Bedford, they would then play Solons at Euclid High School on Monday, February 25th at 6:00 PM. And rounding out the teams here, our boys' basketball team will play Nordonia on Friday night at 7:30 PM, and with the victory over Nordonia and the victory for Stowe over Retsville, we will win the suburban league championship. And we then host the winner of the Warren Harding John Adams game on Saturday, March 2nd at 7:00 PM in our first OHSA tournament game. So a lot of action going on over at the high school, and we'll be talking here shortly about other actions throughout the district. One final thing, on Saturday is the annual North Coast Show Choir Invitational, and if you've not seen Show Choir, you've gotta come out and see this. It is a fantastic day, starts about 9:00 in the morning, goes all the way through almost midnight. Some of the finest show choirs in the region, and actually even from out of the state, are here performing, and we thank our Twinsburg vocal music boosters for their support, their hard work for this weekend's wonderful Show Choir Invitational. So, I could go on and on, there's so many things to celebrate here in the district, but I'm gonna let the principals take over now, because they really, really want to celebrate some outstanding Tigers, and we're gonna ask Ms. Lynn Villa and Mr. Scott Asti, our administrators from Wilcox Primary School, to please come forward so we can celebrate some of our Wilcox Tigers. Good evening.
Thank you so much, Ms. Powers. We also have Mrs. Litmus with us, because she knows all our Tigers. So thank you all for coming tonight. We are going to celebrate our Wilcox Rock students for this month. And, boys and girls, Mr. Asti's gonna call you up, he's gonna talk about you and say some really awesome stuff, and then we're gonna invite your teacher to come on up, and we're gonna do some handshaking, and I'll help you with all of that, okay? Ready, ready? Okay, sit here and smile a little bit.
Thank you, Ms. Felber, Ms. Powers, Board of Education. Brings us great privilege to come here and be able to honor some great folks, students, teachers, and staff alike, so without anything further, like Ms. Villa said, when I call your name, boys or girls, or whoever it is, come on up, and then the teacher who nominated you should come up also. So, first up, Brandon Dupont and Ms. Browning's class. Ms. Browning says that Brandon's excitement for learning is felt by everyone who knows him. He works very hard and shows his best every day, he truly cares about all the peanuts in the class, and often volunteers to help. And Brandon said that Ms. Browning is an amazing and fun teacher, because she makes Brandon so happy every morning. Sometimes she even goes outside and swings with her class. Right? One time, when Brandon didn't know where to put his coin on the hundreds chart, she helped him out. Brandon says that he's gonna miss Ms. Browning next year, a lot, and that they should go on a playdate. Our next student is Gianna Ritli in Mr. Hill's class. Coming up, Gianna. Mr. Hill says that Gianna is a kind and caring first grader, she is a hard worker and excellent friend, and Mr. Hill can always count on her to be on task and a good listener. He is very proud of all her hard work and progress this year. And she says that Mr. Hill is funny and nice, sometimes he says really silly things, too. He also gives Tiger tickets, and you get to pick out prizes from the prize box. Gianna says she's going to miss Mr. Hill next year. Next up is Gabriella Basta in Ms. Litmus's class. She said Gabby is a wonderful lady, she is a role model for everyone at Wilcox, she is an example for all to follow. Gabby excels with her academics, friendliness, and helpfulness, and it's always a pleasure to work with her every day. And she said that Ms. Litmus rocks, because she is always so helpful and nice. One time was Gabby, when Gabby was sad, Ms. Litmus told her to take a deep breath, and she felt all better. She also gives out tickets for the prize box, and she says that Ms. Litmus is an amazing teacher, which she'll miss next year when she goes off to second grade. Our next student is a kindergartner, Chase Griffith in Mrs. Hannah's class. Come on up, Chase. Chase is always responsible in the classroom, he cleans up and helps Mrs. Hannah without ever being asked. Chase is always happy when he enters the classroom and greets Mrs. Hannah with a smile. He is always respectful to his classmates and his teacher. And she says Wilcox rocks because of Chase. And Chase said that Mrs. Hannah rocks because she has fish, a baby, and makes Chase feel happy. It's the little things in life, yes. When he started, he did not know what a number line was, and now he can count to 109. Chase enjoys when Mrs. Hannah helps him make stuff like Valentine's bags, and Mrs. Hannah makes learning fun. We have another kindergartner, Christopher Randell, Ms. Miller's class. She says Christopher exemplifies what it means to be caring and kind, he is a great role model and is respectful to his teachers and peers, he is always willing to help a friend in need, and if someone is struggling to carry all of their belongings to the classroom, Christopher stops and helps them out. And he said that Ms. Miller's the nicest teacher, because she's always so nice and helpful with his math. One time, Christopher got the wrong number, but Ms. Miller had him use the block cubes, and he got it right. She also has her students do stuff that is fun, like coloring and writing. Ms. Miller rocks. Our next student, Bailey Leskovic in Mrs. Pyro's class. Bailey comes to school with a smile on her face every day, she is a good friend to everyone, she is always willing to lend a helpful hand, her positive attitude is contagious to her peers, and Mrs. Pyro is so happy to have Bailey in her class. And she said that Mrs. Pyro is the best teacher, because she helps her students learn. They do daily five, and Mrs. Pyro always shows her students what papers to use, and she makes it fun. One time, when Bailey was working really hard on a numbers paper, Mrs. Pyro helped her get the right answer. Mrs. Pyro rocks. Our next student is a preschooler, Evelyn Amashay, in Mrs. Pyro and Ms. Bender's class. Come on up, ladies. She said Evelyn comes into class each day with a smile, she notices when her classmates are struggling and jumps right in to help them, often without even being asked. Evelyn is very empathetic, kind, happy, and she works hard, and she is a wonderful model each and every day. And she said that Mrs. Pyro is always so nice to her students, she always helps her students make Valentines and helps them grow. Evelyn's favorite is when Mrs. Pyro reads books to her friends. Mrs. Pyro rocks. Another preschooler we have is Liam Luskin in Mrs. Wells's class. She said Liam is such a good friend to all his peers, and he's always willing to help the teacher do whatever she asks. Liam's confidence has grown so much this year, and he always puts forth his best effort when asked to complete a task. Because of this, he has shown great growth in all academic areas. Liam is such a joy. And he said that Mrs. Wells rocks, because she always is so helpful and nice. She's helpful, because she teaches Liam new things every day, and she's so nice, because she helps her students learn letters, counting, and how to make new friends. We have another special recognition. Alright, boys and girls, go ahead and hold up your certificates, right in front of you like this, moms and dads, this is a great opportunity to take some great pictures. On teachers, also, once you get your kiddos set, go ahead and hold up your certificates as well. You can go ahead and find mom and dad. We actually have one more special recognition for Wilcox, which is not something that we've typically done, but as you know, Wilcox rocks, and it's bigger than just the students and the teachers that are there. There's a lot of great people that really make Wilcox what it is. And the PTA actually came to me and said that there's a special individual that really makes some things special in and around our building, that she goes above and beyond her activities. So at this time, I'd like to call up Ms. Yvette Bell and the Wilcox PTA staff. So as they're coming up, I'll tell you this story, because the PTA came to me and said we have to recognize Mrs. Bell for this amazing award. And then I'm like, great, but I have to get her to this meeting now, without telling her why she's coming to this meeting. So then, a few days later, Mrs. Bell comes to me and says, we have to recognize the PTA, because they do such amazing things for our school. And I said, oh my gosh, we have a board meeting, couldn't we just be able to come? And it just all worked out. So, the PTA, President Tina Soret, Vice President Nikki Sadlick, Michelle Petiti, Recording Secretary Maria Hamilton, Treasurer, and Joyce Critchbaum, Corresponding Secretary, says to Yvette Bell, over the last few years, Mrs. Bell's role as the Wilcox Library Assistant has changed. She manages this plastic book room, part of the Makerspace Team, and her response to intervention through kindergarten letters and boot camp. She integrates PBIS, Science, and Social Studies into each library experience through the use of literature and video clips to make those concepts come alive for the students. She is always thinking of new ideas, and she willingly works with teachers, administrators, and PTA to make the Wilcox Media Center the hub of literacy for Wilcox students. According to the PTA Board, she not only encourages, supports, and enhances their efforts, but often takes on additional work for herself to make sure they are successful. Whether it's letting them take over the library for a project, sharing materials, or implementing lessons on their behalf, there isn't anything she won't do to help. Wilcox and the PTA are truly grateful for Mrs. Bell's guidance, enthusiasm, and friendship. Mrs. Bell rocks. And so, we couldn't let Mrs. Bell get off easy by not recognizing the PTA, so we crafted a little paragraph regarding their efforts this year, which have truly been extraordinary. The Wilcox Parent Teacher Association provides several ongoing and amazing resources to the Wilcox staff and students. It has been through the efforts of the PTA that Wilcox students met Asia Citro, and every child received her book, Zoe and Sasupras. Thanks to the PTA, students are able to participate in exciting STEM activities, benefit from $5,000 of teacher grants, have fun-filled spirit weeks, and participate in well-organized holiday parties. Staff are appreciative to the amazing dinners and treats, and assistance within their classrooms, and many other resources that the PTA provides. This year especially, the PTA extended their kindness into supporting community initiatives through the Birthday in a Bag and Kindness Snowflakes, as well as continuing the annual Bring a Veteran to Lunch commemoration. These are just a few of the many examples of why the Wilcox PTA helps make Wilcox rock. Thank you, ladies. Alright, ladies, hold up your certificates like the little children. One more round of applause for Ms. Bell. Next, I would like to turn it over to Dodge Intermediate School with Mr. Hollen, Siwanda Higginz.
That was a really nice presentation, the PTA, I love it. Congratulate all of the Wilcox PTA grandparents as well, across the district from Wilcox Middle High School and the family shop. And I kind of lean into that with the idea that one of the things that's coming up for Dodge is our Boulder Summer Act, and our PTA is currently working on the fact that we're finishing plans for that, and it's March 8th, so we hope that all of our moms and our young men get to come out for the Dodge PTA event, our partnership, and it's been growing every year, we're really excited. So we thank our PTA as well, but we also congratulate the Wilcox PTA. Couple things that are going on at Dodge as we move forward, we're in the midst of celebrating Black History Month, and our students are doing some interesting things with that, and we are right now currently preparing for, to celebrate Women's History Month starting next year, and I'm particularly proud of the Women's History Month celebrations that we do, because that was started by a student by a school year, and so one of the students talked to us about the celebration, so that has become year two for us celebrating Women's History Month in March as well. So we're excited about that. And Dodge has a lot of interesting and fun things going on, but I'd be remiss if I didn't just talk a little bit about Speak Home this year. Speak Home this year, Portland tripled in size, we took, we had to go from two full buses to three full buses, and our kids are saying it's been a fabulous experience, and we appreciate the weather, and we also appreciate our parents for making an opportunity for our kids to experience something different. And so, at this time, we would like to make sure that we do what we came before, which is to celebrate young people.
Mr. Hollen talked about how leadership is so important at Dodge, you know, that student bringing forth information about Women's History Month and being a leader and getting something started at our school. We know that that's important to us, so I have two very special leaders that I'm going to turn this mic over to. They're going to introduce themselves as well as our Students of the Month.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Peters.
And I'm Jacob Moya. We have student council representatives from Dodge, and here from Mrs. Pyro's homeroom. The character word for fifth grade students for this quarter is respect. Respect means that we follow the golden rule of tolerant of differences, use good manners and not poor language, are considerate of the feelings of others, and do not threaten, heck, or hurt anyone, and deal peacefully with anger, insults, and disagreements. The fourth grade students of the month from Mrs. Finley and Mrs. Victor's homeroom are Sophia Gines and Sophia Scofield.
Caring means that one is kind, compassionate, and protective. It means that one expresses gratitude, forgives others, and helps people in need. Caring students are also charitable and selfless. The fifth grade students of the month from Mrs. Booker, Mrs. Button, and Mrs. Madden's homerooms are Sullivan Dieter, Taylor Die, and Kyle Tariq.
The character word for sixth grade students for this quarter is citizenship. Being a good citizen means that you do your share to make your school and your community better. You cooperate, you get involved in community affairs, you say and form, you vote, you are a good neighbor, you will obey the laws and rules, you respect authority, you protect the environment, and you volunteer in your school community and your community at large. The sixth grade students of the month from Mrs. Schmack and Mrs. Miners' homeroom are Nyla Christian and Michelle Williams.
So, this is another great photo opportunity, we have our boys and girls, we're gonna get them as high as we can. I'm gonna ask our presenters to join in for this picture, come on. So as you're taking your picture, I want to congratulate on both fifth and sixth graders, because they are doing an excellent job of representing Dodge and our community. I also want to thank our presenters, because they were kind of caught off guard tonight, and they were short one person, and they were a little worried about it coming in, and so as they came in, don't you think they did an excellent job?
And so, as they came in, don't you think they did an excellent job? So when we talk about leadership, that's what we're talking about, being able to step up and rise to the occasion and making sure that we still have great performance and great recognition. So we thank all of our nominees as well as our presenters. Great job. Just really quickly, I see a bunch of Dodge teachers in our school. You know, you can't get away with that standing up. So if you are a nominee for teaching or Dodge teacher, please stand up to me. At this time, we want to welcome to the mic the high school.
Thank you. So we have a lot going on at the high school edge here. But we're going to start, I'm going to ask Mrs. Powers to actually give out the awards because I can't juggle all this. So when you come up, you're going to get your award from Mrs. Powers, and then shake Mrs. Davis's hand, and we'll move on from there. And we're going to start with, you know, we do the AAA Battery or the AAA Bond Award, right? Where academics, athletics, and all around are recognized each time that we come here. So we're going to start with academic, and we're going to stick with visual arts as we did last month. And we're going to recommend, recognize four outstanding young people who had art placement and recognition at the Expressions Art Awards this last week. We're going to start with Jalen Hunt, an 11th grader, who is recognized for his artwork, Smoke on the Outside. He earned a white ribbon for his work in the art expressions. Second, we have Makai Harris. You know she's an artist. Check out that jacket. I love it. Makai Harris is a 10th grader. She received an honorable mention for her artwork, Illuminate While You Wait. We had one honorable mention awarded for a poem. I don't think Adelina Gale is here tonight. Is she here? She advanced. You know, we do everything at high school. And finally, the way Expressions works is medical research inspires the art. So we have one student, Dana Concary, a 12th grader, whose medical research inspired the art that's up here. So, um, I think Dana, there's Dana Concary, who has been in the program two years, and her medical research is what's inspiring the art. But she's going to be, she's going to save the world someday. That's what I'm thinking. Let's go ahead and have three seats. All right, our second set of awards. And we'll look at where, it's pretty all round. And these are the Student of the Month. These students receive the Student of the Month award after being nominated by their teachers. We do, you know, strong. So this month is noble. So our first award winner is a 9th grader who had several teachers nominate her. Is Bella here? Where's Bella? Bella's not here? Okay. I'm not going to read it all then because Cassidy is here. Cassidy is a 12th grader. Come on up, Cassidy, while I read all your accolades. Cassidy Smith deserves to be recognized for her strong sense of morality and her noble leadership in her senior class. She was always trying to keep her focus in the classroom and reaches out to help others. What makes Cassidy stand out from others is the visible loyalty she has to her friends and classmates. As teachers, they have witnessed this several times, even though I'm sure that she is not aware that people are always listening. In one particular class, she reached out with her generous heart to someone who is juggling a lot right now. She watched Cassidy speak with kindness to her friends, but also to those with whom she is not close. Cassidy is an honest and noble senior, and I know she will continue to make Twinsburg proud as she moves forth in her journey. What's important about this is, you know, sometimes teenagers get a bad rap. But we have Cassidy and other students at our school that are doing amazing things, and people are saying great things about her. So congratulations, Cassidy. Finally, you know, I have to compete with cuteness every month. So today, we have Joshua Ponte. Come on in here, Josh, because I'm glad you all stayed for this. Josh is a 10th grader at THS, enrolled in multiple honors classes, and involved in various clubs and activities, including pep club, student council, drama club, Friends of Rachel, Fellowship of Christian Athletes, and Academic Challenge. As Twenty, our mascot, Josh has become involved in several community service projects that have brought joy to children and adults alike. These include delivering a giant Get Well card and stuffed animal to Olivia, a young lady from Willoughby who suffered from brain cancer, unfortunately. Olivia recently passed away. However, she and her family were able to share a moment of happiness with Twenty. Josh brings his contagious enthusiasm for being Twenty to football and basketball games, and most recently welcomed the runners at the Wellness Fun Run. Twenty also made a guest appearance at the Rex Saturday Holiday Celebration. Twenty gets around. Josh says his favorite thing about being Twenty is hyping up the crowd and seeing the look of excitement on kids' faces when they see Twenty in the house. The positive representation of Twinsburg High School is in specific, but of the entire school district and great community in general is a direct result of Josh's genuine and authentic kindness and innate goodness. Congratulations, Twenty. To show you how kind he is, he says, "When we're all dismissed from here, he will hang out out there and have his picture taken with anybody who wants a picture of Twenty." All right? There's the cuteness quotient. Mr. Felber, you can't follow that, right?
Many have.
No. That concludes our report for this evening.
Thank you. Well, we have a lot to cover tonight, and you're more than welcome to stay. This is usually where we hear a crowd and everybody gets up. We know there's homework and maybe dinner and also.
And Twenty.
And Twenty. How do we compete with that?
I know. You know what? I should go out there. Yeah. That's all. And he's like six doors out from you. I'm going to, I'll give Linda one of those. And then they were taken.
We need to start pushing. Mr. Asti, would you mind closing the door to your right? Thank you. At least works enough. You might as well go. Continuing on with our meeting, we're at committee reports. Do I have any committee reports from my colleagues?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. Okay, Mrs. DeFavio.
So, committee report from the curriculum technology. From the Technology Committee Meeting, which was February 11. Jennifer Farthing ran the meeting, and we had, we discussed a lot. Some of the things we discussed was the adoption of counseling curriculum and planned services. That was discussed by Tanya Brennan, the school counselor at Twinsburg High School, and Esther from Wilcox Primary School. They're both counselors. They talked about the services that would include foundation, academic career, social, emotional, management, use of data, and accountability, utilize data to show impact on student achievement, attendance, and behavior. Michelle Tucker and Dave Edwards talked about a new math textbook that would offer a more rigorous lessons or higher thinking. Dodge, Brandy Correa from Dodge touched base on the Makerspace for fourth, fifth, and They'll be doing data-driven curriculum, solution-centered lessons, hands-on learning, and all this is based on Ohio Technology Standards and Core Academic Standards. Fourth grade capstone project will be robotics. Fifth grade capstone project will be a 3D design and print. And the sixth grade capstone will be multimedia. Norm Potter touched base on the learning standards for technology. There are going to be a lot of new classes offered at the high school. Mr. Lenu talked about, going off base here, talked about chorus, making that an honors, or making, having an honors course, um, course, which would include students to be, that would require some outside organization participation. It will be weighted at a 4.5 scale. And, let's see. He also touched, touched base about maybe a class for music production and design, design study over at the high school. And then Dan Lundie also touched base about a class on adoption of digital art and design. And that's, that's about it. There's a lot.
Excellent. A lot of that is represented in our agenda for our consideration this evening. Any other committees? All right. We're going to move on. I'm going to toss it back to you, Mrs. Powers, for the administrative reports.
Thank you, Mr. Felber. We have two outstanding reports to offer you this evening. As you know, we have been so supported by you in our new efforts. And over the last year or so, two of the exciting things that have happened are going to be presented tonight as updates. The first is some programming information about our preschool. You know, this is the third quarter for, actually, second quarter, almost third quarter, for our kindergarten preparatory program. And I know that you have an interest in just understanding where we are with the program, as well as the integrated preschool program. And then our second presentation this evening will be about our Crumble Initiative over at Twinsburg High School, as well as other places in the district. So I want to welcome again our outstanding administrators from Wilcox Primary School, Ms. Villa and Mr. Asti. Had a busy night tonight, and you're back again.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having us. We are excited to give you an update about preschool and let you know where we are with our two really exciting programs. Click for me, or, okay. He's got me. Okay. So as you know, from back when we asked about expanding our preschool, we have been looking at kindergarten screening data for several years now. And the data shows us from that kindergarten screening that the children who had quality preschool experiences do better at the end of preschool, obviously, and further on into kindergarten. You heard Mrs. Powers read a little bit about the press release about just having those early intervention and those great opportunities really carries over into second grade, third grade, and they do better on the third grade reading guarantee. So we knew that was exactly why we wanted to expand this program, and we have the data to back that up. Our students are working on zones of regulation, they're working on their social, emotional, and you can see that a lot of the things that are integrated into our preschool programs, like the language-rich environment, making sure that the students have hands-on experiences and quality peer interactions, really are targeting our subgroups that we see on our report card, even at this really young age. This is an overview that you have all seen before. It's a little bit updated. It has both of our two programs side by side so that you can see where we are with each of them. Currently, we serve 168 students in both of those programs combined. That is a lot of children, and we are so happy that they are here under our roof and we get that opportunity to get to know them really, really early on in their education. On the IPP side, a couple of things I wanted to point out was that our IPP program really looks at a play-based program with centers, hands-on learning, peer interactions, a lot of that whole and small group instruction by the teacher. Art, music, and PE are led by the specialists in those areas. So they go to art with an art, with the specialists that the kindergarten and first graders have. And the KPP side, we currently have 64 students in that program, and it's a one-year program where the IPP, if you're admitted as a peer model or a student on an IP, you can come to us as young as three years old. So those students can be with us for three years before they ever get to kindergarten, where the KPP program is really focused on that one year right before kindergarten begins. And what's a little bit different about that is it's student-led, project-based learning, and the academics and the arts are interwoven into everything that they're doing. The teachers are working with the students to give them as much ownership in leading the learning. So you'll see a lot, rather than pulling a student over to, "Okay, it's time to do a reading group, or it's time to work on your letters," the teachers are going to them and working with them in that natural environment, in the middle of their play and their creation. If you haven't had a chance to come visit our KPP, we would love you to come and see both of our programs. And then at the, the beginning, when we had first talked about starting this program, we wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity for students for scholarships for up to 20% of our students who had financial need. This is how our integrated preschool program looks right now, and it has grown over the years. When I first started in Twinsburg, we had three morning classes and two afternoon, sorry, three classes, let me think about how that was. Two classes that were all day, and then an additional morning class. And you can see now how much we have grown to three and a half right now over those, over the last several years. No more than 16 of the students in the class, and there's an eight-to-eight ratio of typical peers. We began this school year with 85 students in that program, and we are currently up to 104. There is the potential for probably about 120 before the year is out. We're watching those numbers from Help Me Grow and the students that are turning three with special needs. So it is likely that we will see that continue to grow between now and June. And the last piece up there is that we have 24 peer spots available for next year. So those are our, are our students who will be moving on to kindergarten, not our IP students, our peers. And we have 94 peers who have already applied to be in the program. Our kindergarten prep program, we currently serve 64. That's capacity, so as much as we can, we can have in our classrooms right now. We have 12 students that are on scholarship. 34% of our KPP students did not attend preschool. That was another focus that we were looking to make sure that we were targeting that group of students who maybe didn't have another, have another opportunity for preschool. So you can see that 22 of those 64 did not have preschool before. And then if we look at our scholarship students, we wanted to see which ones had both, had both of those needs, a need for some financial assistance, and also had no preschool before. And you can see that 67% of our scholarship students also did not have preschool. So we are definitely meeting the need of those students who would have come in without some type of preschool experience. Like I shared earlier, the learning is embedded in daily projects. They use the same curriculum as the IPP, so both programs follow the same. They have the same report cards. We're looking for those same end products from the children. It's just we're going about it in a different way. When my daughter was very little, before, before she started kindergarten, and I went and visited a lot of different area preschools, and I think some of it is about the fit. We had a preschool parent meeting last week, and We had a preschool parent meeting last week, and that is exactly what it is. It's not that one program is better than the other. It's just about what is the right fit for your child and for your family. And they take just a different path to get to the same end product. And we're very proud of both of our programs. And in that KPP program, we currently have 71 applications for the KPP. The deadline isn't until mid-May. Just for comparison's sake, last year we had 64 applications, and so we did not need a lottery. It looks like this year we probably will need a lottery for the KPP program.
I do recall that, you know, in the research, when this was originally proposed, whether a student was in preschool or not, you know, really had an impact. But the not that surprised us was those that might have had the means but just weren't. And, and the preparation that they were at the same level as those who hadn't had the opportunity for preschool. So the impact for, what'd you say, 164?
Yes, 168 children.
Yeah. And then, obviously, congratulations. Again, a five-star rating. That's, that's amazing.
It's wonderful. When you think about our kindergarten classes, about 270 students, and we have 168. Now, they're all not ready to go to kindergarten yet, but we know 168 of our children that much earlier and have them under our roof, and they get to know our school district and our building and our teachers and the Twinsburg way. It really is such a benefit.
Including, including progress book for the parents that might be their first venture into the school system, right? Through using progress books?
Yes, yes.
They'll use for the next, what, would it be 14 years?
Absolutely. Yeah, it is really a benefit to have those children with us the sooner we can get them, so.
The next couple of slides get into some of the data around the student success. And just to kind of paint the picture, this slide really depicts some of the growth. And what we did was, we took the end of the first quarter and the end of the second quarter report card data, and I delineated it between the, our integrated preschool program peers, who are the age four and five. So we're comparing apples and apples across programs. The green is the overall kindergarten preparatory program. And then we broke it down to the KPP scholarship students, which is the blue color. And then the purple color, which is the right side, is the KPP students without any preschool experience. So no preschool experience for those students. And looking at the growth data, the first one on the left is students who can produce given letter sounds out of 26. And it's how many the students are growing. So if you look at that, you know, there's not quite as many of the IPP peers growing with that. But I'll show you something that's interesting in the next slide. But they're all about making that same amount of progress. And we're really monitoring that progress from quarter one to quarter two, and then so on through the year. One of the areas is that language and literacy that we recognize through the transition skills summary, as well as the ELA and the district's KRA, the kindergarten readiness assessment, that that language and literacy area is one of the areas that our program needs to focus on in particular. The information on the right is our road counting, so how well students can count. And they're ranging anywhere from an additional 10 to 15 numbers that they're able to count. So first, they're able to just road count up to three. You know, they're adding it up to 13, 14, 15, and so on, from quarter one to quarter two. The interesting part with this one is the students without any kindergarten, or any preschool experience actually grew the most in this area. And that's a trend we saw in a couple of areas as well, where they haven't had any prior experience or opportunity for it. So then they're able to absorb that information at a greater rate, I would assume. The next slide looks at that mastery, or the end-of-the-year benchmark for these. So again, looking at the integrated preschool program peers, the KPP, the scholarship students, and the students without any progress, the first one is knowing all their uppercase letters. And it's interesting that our IPP peers are at 65% mastery level of this. And I was kind of thinking about why. And well, these are our students who have been in the program since third grade. So we have had-
Since three years old.
Oh, since, right, three years old, sorry. So since they were three, we've had them an extra year to influence them and teach them, whereas the other students have just been with us a semester as of the data points. The information on the right identifies two or more rhyming words, meeting or exceeding that benchmark. Again, you could tell they're all fairly standard. The one thing that came to my attention were the scholarship students. And this is one of the things we noticed through kindergarten screening as well. You know, you think of rhyming, and it relates back to some, that sing-song approach to learning. And a lot of the families that may not have access to a lot of resources, you know, listen to music and have the sing-song approach within their household. So I wonder if there's a connection there. But you could see, like, all the data across the apples are fairly consistent from one area to another there. And that is looking at that mastery as of for end-of-the-year benchmarks at the end of the second quarter here. So one of the things we reach out to at the beginning of the year is our preschool parents. So I just wanted to include a couple of quick bits of information from the parent survey. So it was a Google form that we sent out to all the preschool families, and they were able to respond anonymously. Sixty-six families completed the form, and it was a very fair split. About half of the 66 was from our KPP program, half was from the IPP program. Seventy-three percent of the parents report that their child is being appropriately prepared for kindergarten. And this is as of the first quarter. So they're already seeing how the students were in, they're getting settled in, and they already felt at 73% that we are doing a great job preparing them for kindergarten. And then 86% report that they're very happy with the program's implementation and how it was unfolded to them. They enjoy seeing, or they see the growth in most with the academics, followed by problem-solving skills around math, and then the social developmental areas, which are all key areas that our teachers and staff focus in on. Fifty-seven percent report that the zones of regulation is clear and appropriate. This was an area of opportunity for us. So I worked with Ms. Butros, and we started reaching out to the preschool families, sending home additional literature, and we made sure we included them into the wellness fair, where they learned a little bit more about the zones and what we have to offer. There were some parent recommendations from this that I just wanted to share. Parents are interested in a full-day option from reported from the survey. More training in that social, emotional, and the academic expectations, which is kind of in and around why we did the preschool night the other week, and then invited them into the zones training. Better snack options, which we've added juice options, more whole grain options, as well as some apple sauces, some more fresh fruit options as well. So we listened to that. And then 94% say that they would have liked a preschool parent organization. And so I know we're working on kind of conceptualizing a preschool parent organization. We know Nordonia has one, Solana has a great program, Hudson has one, but we don't really have anything yet for, that's unique to our Twinsburg community. So we're in the works of solidifying that I'll turn it back over to Ms. Villa.
So you saw all that great data and the parent feedback. And we were thinking about, Mrs. Farthing and Mr. Asti and I met with the teachers, and in the second, second quarter, and we just said, well, why is this working so well? Why are the kids making this much growth this quickly? And what we came down to is that the learning is embedded in the way that children learn naturally. There, there's so much research out there about children, their job is to play right now. Their job is to be able to create and to think and to solve their own problems. How often are parents jumping in and solving problems for their children? It is a challenge for teachers to step back and let them work it out, but they have to work it out. And I think that's a lot of why they're growing so quickly at this age group. And we know that their brain develops from age zero to five. It's exponential compared to those of us at our age, how much our brain is growing. So they're just ready for the learning. There's a lot of movement and dance and song involved, and, and the learning is fun. And the, the ratio of student, of adults to children is really helpful, especially when you're at this age. Even without a student having a disability when you're three years old, you need a lot more help unbuttoning, unzipping your coat and hanging your backpack up. So that, having that really favorable ratio has been really helpful for the, the children to be able to learn those skills and to grow. And then, like I said earlier, the instruction goes to the children. And so often, children are engaged in something, and then we say to them, okay, come on over, it's time to do this math quiz, or it's time for a reading group. And the research is showing for our youngest learners, it is much more effective to go to where they are and sit down on the floor and listen to their conversation, and then give them those opportunities and role play and model language with them where they are. So a lot of that is happening, and, and that's a lot of what we're thinking and we're seeing is why it's having such a great impact at this time. Looking forward, you know, I, this type of learning involves a lot of paper and glue and toilet paper rolls and all those kinds of things, because it is kind of a maker space all the time. So we go through a lot of consumables and a lot of materials. So that is something we have to be thinking about going forward. It isn't textbooks. It isn't those types of consumables, but there are consumables involved. We want to make sure that we are supporting our English learners and our special ed students in that language-rich environment. That is a key piece of this. I know I've, I've been here before and told you about our reading. And what we're noticing is that we really need to work on that vocabulary development and talking through and making connections to life. That's all language, and that is so much of what we do at the primary level. So that is important for all children, but certainly important for those children who are learning English and our special needs students. And then we want to continue to monitor those needs and make sure that we're meeting the needs of our students and our families in both programs, to make sure that they're consistent and we're continuing to have that really good growth.
So for community and parents, applications are being accepted for the KPP program. The IPP program, the application's actually closed just the other day. We went through our lottery today and pulled out the names that we're going to invite into screening and those that we were just going to put on the list. So those letters should be going out by the end of this week. Currently, the IPP tuition for next school year is proposed at $1,500, which is consistent with what we had, it was this past year. And then KPP, because it is a fifth-day program, it's five days instead of four, we took that per diem rate, added it on. So its tuition is currently proposed at the $1,875, again, which is consistent with years prior. One of the big components that Ms. Villa spoke towards was the scholarship opportunities for families who qualify for free and reduced lunch. They are brought into the program and have 20% scholarship opportunities, and their fees are rated on a sliding scale depending on their income based off the federal poverty guidelines, which changes year to year. So for anyone who's interested, they could go online. It is an online application. As mentioned, the IPP peer applications are closed, but the KPP applications will remain open through that May 15th date. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Or comments?
I appreciate the effort, the rating that you announced this evening is, is always a good feather in you guys' cap. You guys do a great job over there. I know one of the things that personally I looked at when, you know, thinking about implementing this, you know, was, you know, I'm looking forward to two and three years down the line where we can follow these kids and see, you know, the improvement that you showed tonight is definitely tremendous. And I'm looking forward to seeing, seeing that growth. And, you know, I truly think that we are, like you said, setting these kids up for success in the future. And the fact that, you know, what stood out to me today was, you know, you have 270 kids in kindergarten, and we've got 168 of them in preschool right now. I mean, that, you know, that's a, that's a, that's a lot. That's a big impact on, on these kids, so that's good.
I don't know if it's a data point that would mean anything, but it occurs to me that it might be interesting to see of these students, how many, you know, is it their first child in the, in the system, so to speak, versus those that might have peers that have other, you know, levels of learning? You know, if that's a correlation, I don't know if that is easy to pull that data out. I'm not asking to address it today.
Well, I have some anecdotal data. When we were at the preschool parent meeting, this would be for incoming children, I asked that question right away at the beginning. How many are familiar with Wilcox, have had children here? And I'd say it's 50%. When I saw those hands, I was really surprised that we, because these are, you know, these are little ones. So, and it had to be 50% raised their hand that they have had children go through. Wilcox are in our school system already. So, and we can get hard data on that.
Yeah, I was just curious, said rates of learning, if, you know, the, the older child is also participating in learning at a different level, if that impacts their preparation in any way. And, and I guess, not that we're, you know, we don't want to be in competition with their neighbors, but if any had transferred from other preschools, I know not every preschool is created equal. And, and that's a tough thing to assess, but, you know, how many might have been, you know, at another school, whether it was five, four, three, start, you know, and, and what levels they were coming in at. And that really points to what Mr. Slur said when we did the research, or when you presented the research, and Mrs. Powers said, you know, for this expansion, you know, what, two years ago? Thank you.
And I remember another time you presented, you showed pictures of some of the classrooms and some of the things that you have for the kids. And it just looked, for the students, like a very exciting and inviting place to be. And, and of course, at that age, you know, play is important, and they don't even realize their learning as they're playing, which, you know, if you can kind of, I, I'm, lack of words right now, but, as I said, engaging them just in role-playing and problem-solving in just their games and activities and the fun stuff that they're doing, they, they don't even realize they're learning. And it's not, it's like a chore for them. It's, it's something they look forward to coming to and doing.
I wish I would have thought to bring with me the letters that the preschoolers wrote to me. Preschoolers wrote some letters. I know you got some too. So right now, they're, they're on a community helper track. And they created a mailbox, and they wrote letters, and they learned how to, where you put the address. They put little stickers on for the stamp, and then dressed up as mail carriers and came around and delivered the mail to us, which was really genuine writing. They had a reason to do it. They wanted to get a message across. They have a little restaurant in there, in one of the classrooms, and they are writing, they're taking orders. And that's real writing. That's, that is so meaningful to them, because it's something they want to accomplish. And then one of the teachers was sharing with me about the problem-solving. Because there's only a certain amount of room, you have to take turns at different places. And there were two children who wanted to do the same thing at the same time, and she stepped away and said, work it out. And they did. And that's fabulous. So we're hoping that not only the academics, but that social, emotional piece, we're, we'll see these children, and we are gonna, we, don't worry, we will track every single one of them. And maybe "track" is the wrong word, but we will make sure that we are monitoring and making sure. We want to see that this is really effective long-term. That's our goal.
Thank you.
If I could just congratulate both of you. When you start a program from zero to where we are, and the research that happened before the board approved the expansion to KPP, and now this year with all the data that you have been collecting, and all of the cooperative efforts with the community, with the library, if you could, before you go, just say a few things about SEI and how they're supporting us through our preschool initiative.
Sure. So the Summit Education Initiative came to Wilcox and asked us if we'd be part of the Readiness Coalition, which is a county-wide initiative to really bring about early learning readiness in the different communities. And so they invited us to be coalition leaders and went down to their SEI headquarters and talked about what it was, and we got the information around it. But it's basically a charge to go back to your community within Twinsburg and start that conversation of what does early learning readiness look like in your community? What are the needs? What is the landscape of it? And so we've held a half dozen meetings now at Twinsburg Public Library, inviting folks from the library and their outreach department, to AMHA, our partners there, to Summit Educational, to the Summit ESC, Help Me Grow, Summit DD, Child Guidance Family Solutions. And I have all these bodies around the table discussing what are the needs of Twinsburg? Where are we at? We focused in on language and literacy as one and social, emotional on another. So we brought in speakers regarding Dana Susskind's 30 Million Words to come in and speak with us about the importance of communication, take turns, talk more. And then we also brought in, like, Beechbrook and Solutions Behavioral to talk about those greater levels.
Our teachers.
Our teachers, also to talk towards, you know, those social, emotional needs around social, emotional for our guidance counselors, and then with the language and literacy, our own reading teachers as well. And so we started that conversation with the various preschools who feed our program, approximately 18 different preschools, main preschool programs that feed us, to really unify that conversation of, okay. And last year, we even passed out the zones of regulation to get that language into their programs that are feeding our programs. So it's really, through SEI, it's facilitated a great partnership to really prioritize early learning in just our community, and then taking it back to Summit County of what we're doing as a larger model countywide. It's been amazing, just amazing to be part of such a great initiative.
So thank you very much for- So, thank you very much for your leadership and for your desire to partner with community partners too, because I think we're seeing growth in the program, waiting lists, because our parents understand the value of starting on this learning early and doing so in such a great, great way. So, thank you for all that you do at Wilcox. Congratulations on your five-star rating and that's because.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Feldberg, so that was our first presentation. Our second presentation, equally as fascinating, talks to the board this evening about our Chromebook Initiative. Earlier this year, I asked Mrs. Farthing to circle back to our staff and our parents and collect some survey feedback about how the Chromebook Initiative is going, what we've learned so far now, and this is the halfway point of our second year, and some thoughts about how we're doing from the perspective of our students. And we have a couple of our Twinsburg High School students here tonight as well to share their thoughts about the Chromebook Initiative, which I think is going to be very fascinating. So, good evening.
Good evening, Board of Education. Thank you for having us here this evening. In addition, thank you for your support of this project as we've had, we've been talking about this a lot and for a long time, and we just really would like to say thank you for your support. Just to recap, our Chromebook Initiative, we're here for an update. Last year at this time, we had rolled out ninth and 10th grade and then now our whole high school is in a one-to-one environment. And our goal is that the Twinsburg High School, the Twinsburg City School District Chromebook Initiative will enhance and transform learning opportunities while providing all students with equitable access to technology. And we will talk about equitable access to technology multiple times this evening. When we talked about rolling out the Chromebook Initiative, we had some images in mind of what we were looking for with our students. We wanted our students to be motivated lifelong digital learners. We wanted them to be creative. We wanted them to be good communicators, efficient problem solvers, and responsibly and culturally aware digital citizens. And when you hear that, a lot of those things are the same things that we talked about in the 21st Century Teaching and Learning Strategic Plan, and those are the four Cs that we want our students to be able to do going forward with our future. We have four main goals and tonight, we're going to talk about each of the four goals in a little more detail. Again, we want to provide the students with equitable access. We want to be able to provide the students with personalized learning experiences. We want to extend the learning beyond the walls of Twinsburg High School and we want to differentiate professional development so our teachers can be successful. Our first goal, again, is to provide the students with equitable access to technology. There is an image of the rollout for you and then a picture from our first rollout. And again, when we talk about this, we have to give a huge shout-out to our technology team. I don't want to brag, but things went so, went very smoothly with this rollout and I think we just have a very cohesive team that just works so well together. We just can get it done and it's just a great team effort and I think, I mean, we have some lessons learned from each rollout. You know, the freshman night that in the August was a little bit crazy, but Dr. Hebert already has some suggestions about how to make that better for next school year. So, every time we do something, we get a little bit better and learn ways to make it better, but just again, one more big shout-out to the technology team. And now, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Mary.
Good evening, Mrs. Powers, Mr. Welker, Mr. Aho and Board of Education. Thank you for having me and Mrs. Farthing with you tonight. Goal number two, Mrs. Farthing actually addressed the why, the central reason behind the Chromebook Initiative, and it's to transform teaching and learning and also create that equitable access for students. So, the next three goals are going to dig a little deeper into the how and how are we going to meet this broader vision? So, there are a variety of strategies that we've implemented throughout the course of the last year that will enhance and personalize learning experiences for students. And we're going to attempt to do this through pictures, through images. So, you see the pair up there. That is a representation for Pairdeck. And what Pairdeck is, is a Google Slides add-on. So, Google Slides is a format for which, what you see right here is a Google Slide presentation. So, Pairdeck is an add-on that teachers will use to engage students through their Chromebooks to collect real-time feedback and data. So, it's engaging, they're answering questions, they're being able to respond in the moment so that teachers can then inform their instruction moving forward. So, it's very engaging for students, they enjoy it quite a bit. Another element you see up here is the breakout EDU. And on the left, you see a physical breakout box. So, we've combined, you see the Chromebooks being used, digital forms along with that physical hands-on component to provide an environment where we're addressing both the collaboration, the critical thinking through the digital platform, as well as that hands-on learning component. Teachers are also using Google Forms, Screencastify, Flipgrid, Delta Math, Edge Elastic, and a variety of other educational tools to engage students. Our next goal, you saw 20 tonight, our next goal is to extend guided and academic learning beyond the classroom walls. And we needed to support teachers as they created these learning opportunities and environments with students that extended beyond just the school day. So, our first step was to harness the power of Google. So, the Google applications, we dug into each one of them from Google Docs, Slides, Sheets, and so on, to really understand what they could do and what capacity they could personalize and differentiate learning for students. The sharing feature that's available for students outside of the school building and school day is second to none. So, that was something that we really dug into deeper. The Google Classroom platform as a learning management system has been pretty much a game-changer for our teachers and for our students because not only is it a hub for being able to push out information, but also to collect it back. And students are able to then reach out to their teachers or their peers and be able to ask questions in the evening time. You get a personalized email notification and teachers can reach back out to students. The final component here, which you see visually, is getting Google certified. So, this was a huge goal of ours last year, which continues throughout this year and will going forward as well. But last year, nearly half of the high school teachers stepped forward voluntarily to give up their time. After school, we had a Google Academy and that's where we dug a little deeper into all things Google. And by the end of the semester, spring semester last year, we offered an opportunity for student, excuse me, teachers to become Google Level 1 certified. So, there's a few images of teachers getting certified. We celebrated by bringing 20 around with balloons and, you know, their badge. So, this year, we're going to carry out that momentum, offer that same opportunity for teachers, and this should result in Level 2 certification and then another cohort for Level 1. Our next goal is to differentiate professional development opportunities so that teachers can be successful when implementing educational technology tools. So, the way we tackle this is to meet teachers where they were. Everybody's on, in a different zone, if you will, in terms of comfort levels and in terms of their educational career experiences. So, we offered a variety of ways to reach teachers, from one-on-one, personalizing it during their planning periods, to Google Lunch and Learns, to the Google Academy after school hours. And we're going to offer this year a boot camp, like a quick hitter right before the Google certification process for those who are experienced but just need to brush up on it. So, just really trying to vary our options for teachers. What you see here is our first-ever conference-style professional development that we accomplished in October. Conference style is, it provides like a menu for each time slot, so there are 50 to hour-long, 50-minute to hour-long time slots. And teachers can choose their session that they attend, and it was kind of like for teachers by teachers, and so teachers led the PD as well. But they can choose their sessions based upon, you know, comfort level and where they at, where they are at novice to experienced levels, their content area, or the grade levels that they teach. We'll continue that going forward too, because we think that choice is very, not only necessary, but also that's what we're hoping for our students, we want to do the same thing for our staff. And then, lastly, we, this year, we implemented Tiger Innovation Challenges. So, these were fun ways to kind of engage our teachers in conversations about new educational technology tools. So, as something comes down the pike like Pairdeck, we, the challenge was to try it first as teachers and then you reflect and then implement it for students. So, it was just a fun, it is just a fun way to engage our staff in a different format. Of course, gaining feedback from all of our stakeholders is important and the first stakeholder group that I'd like to address are educators. So, we surveyed educators on a variety of things at THS and we started back in September when they first received their own Chromebooks last school year. And you'll see the two comparisons here. We asked, this is an important question in terms of how comfortable are you with Google? Rate your Googliness. Say that 10 times fast. But you see on the, on the far left, number one would be the novice end of things and number 10 on the Likert scale would be expert. And just in this short period of time from September to December 2018, we're seeing those bars shift. Of course, there's still work to do. We want to move everybody into a very comfortable zone, but I think we've made some progress, so that's been exciting to see. And then, we put together a little Flipgrid for you. This is where you can pose a question electronically to students potentially, but here in this case to staff, and they do a video reflection. So, we're going to watch a couple of teachers and then we're going to move on to our student They were asked, "How has the Chromebook Initiative helped your teaching and learning within your classroom?"
Hi, my name is Brandy Thomas and I just wanted to talk a little bit about the Chromebook Initiative here at THS.
This is a prime example of how not to rely on technology.
I do a Brain Teaser opening problem, just see if the kid's brain's moving on Google Classroom. We use a Google Form to fill that out and the students turn, submit that into. Hi, my name is Brandy Thomas and I just wanted to talk a little bit about the Chromebook Initiative here at THS. I teach Algebra 1 here at the high school and we use our Chromebooks daily. I do a Brain Teaser opening problem, just see if the kid's brain's moving on Google Classroom. We use a Google Form to fill that out and the students turn, submit that into me right away. I've used differentiated Google Forms to help group students for me, because I can get immediate data right away, and then I can use that to group my students based on their abilities. I also use Edge Elastic for all of our unit tests and as a check for understanding. The students usually complete one of those every day. So, the students are used to using their Chromebooks in my class daily, not to mention that we are using the DTHMOSS, which is the state test calculator, which is also on the computer. So, having those with them every day is very, very, very beneficial for what we're, what I'm using it in my classroom for. I can't imagine doing the curriculum I am without the students having these Chromebooks. Now, if only they could come with them charged all the time, then we would have, it would be a no-brainer. Okay? Thanks.
The Chromebook Initiative at THS has enabled every student in our high school to have the world at their fingertips. Students are learning how to use the Internet responsibly. They also are collaborating in real-time using their Chromebooks to create a Google Sheet, to create presentations, and various other projects. They also are becoming self-directed learners, where the teacher is more of a facilitator. So, that love of learning is being cultivated, which is awesome. Also, Google Classroom is a fantastic communication tool that students use to get their assignments. And if they're absent, it's okay because they can see what they missed on Google Classroom. So, it's really been a game-changer and we are lucky that we've had this Chromebook Initiative at the high school.
We're going to pause the teacher feedback at this point and move on to our students as stakeholders and get some perspective from two of our students today. I brought with me Carmen Priestley, who is a senior at THS, and Olivia Voizie, who is a sophomore at THS. And what's interesting about the varying grade levels, as you know, seniors just got their Chromebooks in the fall and Olivia has had kind of a longer perspective and with that integration component. So, I'd like to turn it over to them, please.
So, the Google Classroom application has not only been beneficial to teachers as it's been expressed, but our students as well. And the use of the Google Classroom application has allowed me to have direct access to my assignments as well as other information. Many of my teachers have used the Google Classroom application, not only to send out those assignments, but to send reminders of upcoming assignments. And some of them have even attached documents needed to complete those assignments. So, the Google Classroom application has this duality of not only functioning as a place where I can directly complete my assignments and submit those to my teachers, but also a place where I can be reminded of those future assignments. And in addition, the Google Classroom application has been really helpful for me as a senior in preparing me for college. A perfect example of this is the fact that a common application used on college campuses is the Blackboard application. And because of how, sorry, because of how familiar I am with the Google Classroom application, I feel very confident that I will have no issue in maneuvering through the Blackboard application. Another example of this is just in my meetings with my guidance counselor, Mr. Ratauski. I've been able to just pull up my Chromebook and pull up information about the process of applying for college and scholarships and just to have that information at my fingertips. And we've been able to work through those things on Naviance. And so, I've been able to just bookmark different information about scholarships and so it's been extremely helpful for me, just being able to have that information for future use and to be able to reference it and to not only, to not just see that process being done for me, like on his computer, but to be able to work through that process myself alongside him. So, overall, I think that the use of the Chromebooks and the applications on the Chromebooks have not only helped me in my academics at THS, but have really prepared me for college and life beyond.
Before you run away, how familiar were you with applications like Spreadsheets and such and the difference, were you using Google applications previously? In other, or did you have familiarity with that?
On, so like Spreadsheets, like on, like Sheet, the Sheet application?
Yeah, or Word, or you know, the ones that are sold to the Google Suite now. Had you used them before on another computer device?
I had, well, I took Office Suite at THS, so I was familiar with all the Microsoft software. But I wasn't as acquainted with some of the applications on the Google software such as Sheets. I use like Google Slides and Google Docs, of course, because a lot of the teachers use that because it has that shareability feature where we're able to share it with the teachers. But just in using it this year, I've been able to really just become more acquainted with it and learn the software a lot more, which has really helped me in my work this year, so.
Mr. Aho and I are taking a class through Ashford University and we know a lot about Blackboard. I think your father would envy me. I really appreciate how, what you're saying shows that you have those life skills that you need to be successful in the next step. Just a question, so as a senior, you know how life was at Twinsburg High School till this year and now you have your Chromebook. How was that transition for you? You're very with it, you know, you're a student of the 21st century, but even switching how we teach and learn can be a struggle for some students. So, how is that like at the high school for yourself and other students?
I think the transition was pretty seamless, mostly because though we didn't have the Chromebooks, we still used a lot of the Google applications such as Google Classroom. So, a lot of us have Google Classroom on our phones, which is also very helpful because we can be notified on our phones of those things, those assignments. But I think just having our Google Chromebooks in class, I think it wasn't much of a transition at all, mostly because, like I said, we were already very familiar with those applications. Yeah. Thank you.
Good evening. I've definitely had a lot of experience with the Chromebooks from ninth to 10th grade. We've definitely been more engaged this year, I would say, especially in my English and history classes. We We use both the folders to organize our notes instead of carrying folders and paper scrambling everywhere, as well as our textbooks at our fingertips. So no more carrying heavy textbooks around. They also use, sorry, like Paradig, for example, in history. We have engaged notes where we could have fun with them, like drawing features and stuff like that with, stuff like that with maps and stuff and make the notes more engaging for kids. And then the teacher could get that immediate feedback to either pinpoint a kid and give them extra help, or just move the lesson along quicker for what kids already know. Definitely in English, using No Reading, for example, it helps making our writing and grammar more engaged and informed. And we could use that in our papers when we write, when we get the feedback from our teachers. And finally, with the sharing, the group projects, each student is able to put their like fingerprint or touch on their projects while we have a side-by-side comparison of the rubric through split screen. And that has definitely been able to open up the doors for many things to come, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
And I also think the communication has been a big key factor in getting in touch with your teacher after hours. And I know that's not their job, but a lot of them are very good at reaching out or getting back from what I've seen. And it kind of, I think it reduces some excuse factors for some of the kids and, but just from my own experience with my two daughters at the high school, it just, it's been a great way to keep in touch with the teachers and questions on assignments or maybe, you know, getting things turned in after hours or, or things like that. I think it's, it's just been a great tool. In addition, you know, it's, and I say tool because it's not replacing teaching, I keep saying that, but it, it's been a great tool for the students.
I'd like to publicly thank them. They did a fantastic job in stepping forward to, to speak tonight because, great stuff. Thank you. All right, our next stakeholder that we're going to look at is the parent feedback that we've received. And I tried to synthesize this through emerging themes that, that, that were brought forward by anyone who had submitted feedback via, via the survey. So the benefits that parents noted were related to the learning that's happening outside of the school, day timeframes and walls. And then the connectedness that has happened as a result of the Chromebooks and the Google platform in and of itself. So the connectedness, as you, as we noted multiple times between teacher and student in the evenings, as well as from peer-to-peer between students and collaboration. And they don't, no longer have to align their schedules to meet at somebody's house to work on a project and, and whatnot. So the net, the following theme would be leveling the playing field for all. Majority stated that, you know, access for everyone was important. Nearly all parents noted that their child is working on their Chromebooks in the evenings to work on homework or projects. The assessment piece I found to be really powerful because 76% reported that their child is being assessed at least one time per week, and that's important for us as we use that data to drive and inform our instructional steps. Equally, 70% thought that their student was more engaged as a result of the Chromebook initiative and have, have, or have the skills to be prepared for high school, or excuse me, for life after high school, be it college or the workplace. And then 64% stated that the Chromebooks have helped to organize their student. Having said that, we'll move into the limitations, which actually are more powerful because those conversations are, how do we address the limitations? So if 64% stated that their child is organized, equally so 30%, 36% stated that it didn't necessarily help to, help with organization. So we've got to, we've got to meet each child where they at. We have to see what's going on. Is it because we're carrying texts, binders, and Chromebooks? So we really want to dig a little deeper there and figure out how to meet each child with organizational strategies in that regard. The second limitation here is, as noted, that various items are blocked on the Chromebooks, like YouTube and Hangouts. And teachers are working through a vetting system. So if they have an educational YouTube video that they want to be whitelisted, for example, they submit a ticket and it's vetted through. So that YouTube in general is blocked, but those things that are educational, we get whitelisted and pushed out to students in that regard. Parents also noted that, as the teachers have, that keeping them charged and remembering to bring them to school have been just another layer to, to the parenting routine in the evenings. And so as you know, we have Chromebooks that are available in the library for student use to be checked out during the day if, if it's not charged or if it's not brought with them. The first question if I'm there that I ask is, "Show me your phone. Cell phone charged? If that is, then your Chromebook should be." So it's something we work through.
Is there lots of charging stations?
So we have a charging station in the library. Teachers are troubleshooting that too within their own classrooms trying, but we really are trying to, as a classroom management piece, you know, the old school is, "I forgot my textbook" or "I forgot my pencil." So this is the new wave of, you know, the forgetfulness. And it's so, just trying to troubleshoot it on an as-needed basis, but good question.
We never had a dog ate my Chromebook yet?
The dog, that's one we haven't had yet. The dog hasn't.
Sorry.
Not yet. And then they noted the lack of access to printing is problematic and we're, we're really trying to shift away from printing so much and going into, you know, an electronic submission process. And then finally, some parents noted that their children need textbooks and are too reliant on technology. And I thought that was an interesting take on, on an element as, you know, my child sometimes does benefit, my own personal child, from having the textbook there and the flipping of pages and being able to, to see it live versus in an electronic format. So just so that we can clarify that point, if they're not assigned a textbook, a student is not, there's a classroom set that's available and teachers will always be willing to, to sign out a textbook for the evening for, for students to be able to use. So we're working together. Yeah, I agree. Technology is not always the way to go. Again, it's just a tool to help enhance the instruction. Okay, so the Chromebook initiative to date, we feel is going very well, but we have a lot of continued work to do. So as recommendations in our next steps, we're really working on moving from traditional teaching and learning practices into integrating the technology so that we're using it to help gather data and to inform our instruction for our next steps. You, you've heard a little bit about personalization tonight. This whole past year has been spent on kind of focused on transforming the teaching and learning, and now we want to start to shift into the personalization and differentiating instruction for, for students and what they need. So that's the work moving forward. And how to, how to get there, you know, we want to continue our conversations with our stakeholders, our students, our parents, our community members, our administrators, and continue instructional rounds. These are walkthroughs that are non-evaluative. We pop in and then we have conversations and dialogue about best practices with regards to instruction and tech integration. We want to continue to harness the power of Google because that's ever-evolving as well. It changes and we have to stay current with those changes and how we want to integrate that into our classrooms. And then one important thing to consider is the SAMR model. So as we start to design lessons, we want to push each other as designers of these lessons to move from the S, which is a substitution phase where you're just simply, note-taking was done on paper pencil and now it's done on a Chromebook, and push into this redefinition phase where we think about what can we do now with the Chromebooks that we could never, that was inconceivable before. So one, one very simple example, that, that note-taking piece, can we create a global audience with our papers so that we're, we're maybe interacting with somebody in a different country? And so that collaborative piece, that's something we can do now with the technology that was inconceivable before. So really thinking about our lesson design and, and moving into that redefinition phase is going to be important for us. One other and final component that's going to be very, very important for us is a tiger innovation team. So we're looking at putting together a team of teachers and potentially students because their voice matters just as much, but a team of early adopters who are going to be the team, the go-to team. So they're going to be, you know, the, the trailblazers. As these new educational technology tools come out, we share it out with the team and then they go try it in their classrooms and they're, they're the resource for sharing it out and then helping support their colleagues. And same thing with students. They can also help us in, in many, many ways because they're our best resource as, as a generation too. So I will conclude with that, but I can't, I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you to everybody administratively, board members and community members, our tech team, because this initiative is fantastic and we're excited that it's, it's here, it's, it's live, it's well, and we thank you for, for everything you did to support it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I would add not only congratulations, but we know as a board, all the research, all the plans, all the opportunities that we reviewed in, in this rollout, not just, you know, the physical computers, but how was it going to be rolled out? What was the research? Professional development? What was the staging? Like you mentioned the Chromebooks to the teachers first and, and then the PD, professional development component. It's, it's not a small initiative. We had obviously, you know, neighbors to look at, and I know you talked to a lot of other schools and what worked, what didn't, and learned quite a bit. So we had that advantage, but I think you really took it to the next level, you know, because we haven't, you know, heard many of the limitations and such. And a couple of business we've made, you know, it looks like a college or a workplace, laptops up, everybody's doing something.
Good. Thank you.
So I got two real quick comments.
Absolutely.
We went on a bus field trip to all the schools, was that about a year ago? So it was before the entire high school had them. And you could tell, nothing against how we've been teaching, that we do a great job, but you could definitely tell when we walked into some classrooms that did not have Chromebooks and walked in some classrooms that, you know, were fully Chromebooks. So some freshman classrooms and some junior, senior classrooms. And you could definitely tell just the different, in, the difference in the environment of, you know, the learning that was going on and the, the engagement of the students in the classrooms with the Chromebooks versus the ones without it. So I thought that, you know, to me, that was the eye-opening, you know. The data's great, the, the, the research is fantastic, but I actually see it and, and happen there, you know, that, that was the eye-opening, you know, point for me that said, hey, this was the right thing and, and I'm glad. And, you know, what I also like is the fact that even in the classrooms, even in the grades that don't have the Chromebooks now, the kids are being taught Google Classroom and they're being taught, you know, how to do things so that when that rollout comes, when, when it gets to them, they're already ahead of the game. You know, I have a second grader who was doing a project where they had, he had to research a historical figure and print out some different things to put on a tissue box. And the kids have a Chromebook at home that they share. And my fifth grader actually taught him how to use whatever Google Word may be, you know, to, to create the boxes and, and do that. You know, he looked at me, I had no idea what I was doing, so my, my fifth grader helped him, which I, you know, was, was amazing because I remember my soon-to-be freshman doing the project back when she was in second grade and she couldn't do it by herself. And once my fifth grader showed him, he then created all six of these different things with the facts and, and got it done. So it was, you know, we're embedding that information into these kids now so that way when they get the technology, you know, they're going to, they're going to roll right into it.
Good, I'm so glad.
So that's, that's all in what you guys are doing and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Maybe an interesting data point that I was thinking of when you were talking, Mr. Soler, is survey the parents, you know, not only what you've done, but we'll have, you know, a whole new crop of parents, you know, coming in and such. It'd be interesting to see their level of understanding. I know when my daughter was at CBCC as a senior last year, you know, they got a Chromebook. Twinsburg State students didn't have one yet at that level. And there was definitely differences. I'm like, well, just do this. And well, that key doesn't exist, you know? And, and, you know, I've been using computers a long time. So I'd be curious to see, you know, almost a pre-year and a post-year survey to parents, you know, what have you learned? Because, you know, some students are going to share and, you know, they may be picking things up.
Right, that's a fantastic point because some of the keys are missing on the condensed keyboard and having the student teach their parents is, is a great idea and collecting that data. I love it.
And as a small added bonus, with the Chromebooks out, the phones can be kind of pushed away.
Oh yeah, right, right. Eliminate that. Yep, that's true.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Board of Education, before Mrs. Muriel's sister, I just want to thank her. She has just been so supportive of the effort at the high school under the direction of Mrs. Martin, collaboration with Mr. McGee. Thank you so much for allowing us to create this new role of supervised innovative programs. We would not be where we are today if it wasn't for that lady standing right there, who is so curious about 21st century learning, is a student of it herself, comes back and shares out and supports and models and creates and differentiates. And Beth, I can't thank her enough.
Thank you.
Because we are where we are because of the effort that you're providing at the high school. Thank you so much for your leadership, boy. Thank you for supporting this idea several years ago and getting it off the ground and meeting with somebody, dragging the Chromebook initiative. Beth was the perfect person and I really do appreciate it.
Thank you. It's been fun. I really enjoyed it. Thank you. Have a good night.
And just as a side, I just wanted to congratulate Carmen. We have a new organization to have called the Twinsburg Schools Foundation. And a little, about two months ago, we had a little bit of a logo contest and Carmen was the winner for the Twinsburg Schools Foundation logo, which will now be on all of their print materials. So thank you very much for sharing your talent.
Was it designed on a Chromebook? Just saying. Excellent. Thank you, Mrs. Powers. And as you heard me to say to some of the younger students, you know, now's a good time. You can leave it. You're welcome to stay. We've got a lot of business, but, you know, I'm sure there's Chromebook homework and other things you might want to do. We are at remonstrance, Mr. Aho. Do we have any blue cards?
No blue cards.
Okay. I'm going to move on to H Treasurers Report Recommendations. H1 resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education approve the following meeting minutes, regular meeting of January 20th, 2019, and February 6th, 2019, as sent to the board under separate cover. Is there a motion for H1?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Soler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Soler? Yes. Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. H1 passes four zero. Without objection from my colleagues, I'm going to read I, 1, 2, and 3 together. I1 resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. I2 resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. And I3 resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Is there a motion for I, 1, 2, and 3 as read?
So moved.
Move with Mrs. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, move with Mrs. DeFabio. I don't recall if I had any, anything on, from a discussion standpoint. I don't think we have retirements, right? No? Okay. Any further discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Soler?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And I, 1, 2, and 3 pass four zero. Moving on to action items, new business and lots of it. Probably get to release this at some point. Need to catch my breath. Here we go. J1 resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a donation from Ohio Pile Prints to Twinsburg High School in the amount of $179.48. Donation from the sale of Twinsburg apparel at local retailers to be used for miscellaneous instructional supplies for the attached exhibit. J2 resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following revised job descriptions as per the attached exhibit, school counselor, middle school, school counselor, high school. Three, resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a proposal for an overnight extended student trip for Twinsburg High School students to travel to Columbus, Ohio for the OHSAA state tournament on March 7th, 2019, and returning on March 9th, 2019. Determination of which bowling team students will attend will be based on the results of the district bowling meet in late February. The cost of this trip is being paid in full by the athletic department and Twinsburg Athletic Boosters and sent to the board under separate cover. Four, resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a proposal for an overnight extended student trip for Twinsburg High School students to travel to Canton, Ohio for the OHSAA state swimming and diving championships on February 22nd, 2019, and returning February 23rd, 2019. Determination of which THS swim team members will attend will be based on the results of the district meet. The cost of this trip is being paid in full by the athletic department and the Twinsburg Athletic Boosters as sent to the board under separate cover. And then we have quite a few here under curriculum and I'm going to read I5, but I'm not going to read the adoption part of every single one because it's, it's repetitive. Resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education adopted and purchased Glenn Co. Math Course 2, Grade 7, and Course 3, Grade 8. Consumable tech, tech- Two, Grade Seven, and Course Three, Grade Eight, consumable tech, textbooks by McGraw-Hill at the cost of $34,835.67 for Math Seven and Math Eight. The adoption was approved by the District Curriculum Technology Committee on February 11th, 2019, as sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general fund expense. Six, resolved that the Twins Board of Education approved the adoption of Maker Space Curriculum for Grades Four, Five, and Six. The adoption was approved by the District Curriculum Technology Committee, February 11th, 2019, as sent to the board under separate cover. See, I said I wasn't going to read it. He read it. All right. Seven, resolved that the Twins Board of Education approved the adoption of the counseling curriculum and plan of services. Eight, resolved that the Twins Board of Education approved the adoption of dual-credit French for course of study. Course will run based on considerations for staffing and/or enrollment as recommended by the superintendent. Nine, resolved that the Twins Board of Education approved the adoption of Ohio's learning standards for technology. The adoption was approved by the Curriculum Technology Committee on February 11. Ten, resolved that the Twins Board of Education approved the adoption of the project Lead the Way Principles of Engineering Course of Study. Course will run based on considerations for staffing and/or enrollment as recommended by the superintendent. Eleven, resolved that the Twins Board of Education approved the adoption of music production and design course of study. Course will run based on considerations for staffing and enrollment as recommended by the superintendent. Twelve, resolved that the Twins Board of Education approved the adoption of marketing course of study. And this course again will run on considerations for staffing and/or enrollment as recommended by the superintendent. Thirteen, resolved that the Twins Board of Education approved the adoption of digital art and design one course of study, again based on considerations for staffing and enrollment. Fourteen, resolved that the Twins Board of Education approved the adoption of 3D Suramix Two Sculptures Course of Study Revision. Fifteen, resolved that the Twins Board of Education approved the adoption of the Motion Graphics Course of Study. Sixteen, resolved that the Twins Board of Education approved the adoption of Media Events Course of Study. Seventeen, resolved that the Twins Board of Education approved the adoption of the Interactive Media Course of Study. Eighteen, resolved that the Twins Board of Education approved the adoption of the Broadcast Journalism Course of Study Revision. Nineteen, resolved that the Twins Board of Education approved the adoption of Honors Humanities Course of Study Revision. Twenty, resolved that the Twins Board of Education approved an equipment exchange amendment to the copier lease and copier manage printer service contract approved November 28th, 2018 with MT Business Technologies of Cleveland. This exchange will be completed at no additional cost to district and sent to the board under separate cover. Twenty-one, resolved that the Twins Board of Education approved a contract with education alternatives for one student to attend the day treatment program for the remainder of the 2018-2019 school year in the amount of $9,576 and sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general fund expense. The districts, the student district of residence is Akron. Cost of the education student will be built back on the SF14H and SF6. Twenty-two, resolved that the Twins Board of Education approved the college credit plus memorandum of understanding between Kent State University and Twinsburg City School District for the 2019-2020 school year for the attached exhibit. Twenty-three, resolved that the Twins Board of Education approved the college credit plus memorandum of understanding between Cuyahoga Community College and the Twinsburg City School District for 2019 and 2020 as sent per the attached exhibit. Twenty-four, resolved that the Twins Board of Education approved the college credit plus memorandum of understanding between the University of Akron Twinsburg City School District for 2019-2020 school year for the attached exhibit. And finally, twenty-five, resolved that the Twins Board of Education Twinsburg High School senior Carson Albright to exercise Board of Education Policy 5111 slash optional tuition-free education F and remain students at the Twinsburg High School through the end of the 2018-2019 school year. Anybody need that repeated? It's not going to happen. Is there a motion for those items as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Slurr. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Catch your breath, rewind. Great work by Curriculum Technology Committee in the overview that we previously heard from Mrs. DeFabio. Got some trips, some really exciting coursework. I, I do want to give a shout out to Mr. Walker for a copier lease negotiations because basically something was not performing as promised and we got it swapped out. Didn't need to be in the agenda, but we want every, every detail there. So that's, again, creating good solid relations with our vendors. And let's see. I think that, Mrs. Powers, did you have any comments on any, any particular?
Of the, the three MOUs or memorandums of understanding support or college credit plus program, you'll find that these are annual recommendations. I, I believe I have one additional one on the agenda at the next board meeting. And then with regard to questions might be asked about whether SF14H and SF6 is in, out of J21, when we have a, a student that is placed in our school district through the foster care system in Summit County and their residence is, their parents live elsewhere, if that child is a student with a disability and there's some additional opportunity that they require for their learning, the district of residence is charged back with that tuition. So although initially it's an expense that we have here on the agenda, through Mrs. Trapphegan's office and funding source, Akron's public school district will actually support that student's tuition through those two forms that we've been using. That's what that is. And then the last recommendation of J25, Carson Albright's parents sent a letter to indicate that they are moving out of our community in the spring and Carson is a senior. So work policy provides an opportunity with your approval for Carson to remain parent of graduation. So we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
A further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Slurr?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And all those items through 25 pass four zero. Moving on to 26, resolved that the Twins Board of Education adopt and purchase, oh, it's in French, Dumontes? It was a Spanish kid. 12th edition textbook, don't be laughing at me, by McGraw-Hill at the anticipated cost of $5,221.80 for the dual-credit French course offered at Twinsburg High School. Course enrollment not yet finalized. The adoption was approved by the District Technology Committee on February 11th, 2019, as sent to the board under separate cover. This is a permanent improvement expenditure. And finally, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approved the purchase of two Bluebird version 71, 72 passenger BBCV 3303 built unit buses and one Bluebird version 47 passenger BBCV 2311 built unit bus at the cost of $241,585.00 pursuant to the terms conditioned set forth in the proposal sent to the board under separate cover. The buses will be purchased through the fall of 2018. Ohio Schools Council bid from Cardinal Bus Sales and Service of Lima, Ohio, and this is a permanent improvement expenditure. Is there a motion for those two items as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Slurr. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. DeFabio. Mr. Walker. Buses again on a regular rotation.
So, so this is part of our 10-year replacement cycle. It's through our high schools purchasing consortium and we've been able to maintain decent pricing through, through that program.
And we're at a pretty good rotation at this point where everything's fairly, you know, fairly new and less and less maintenance issues because of this rotation.
Absolutely.
Excellent. Any further comments? Roll call.
Mr. Slurr?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And 26 and 27 pass four zero. We are now at K. Miss Langus, any comments from my colleagues?
Just that, Mr. Felber had mentioned the Blue Ribbon Committee's pancake breakfast coming up on Saturday, March 9th. It's always a fun time. I'll be doing something wherever somebody tells me to go, I will be there and, and helping out. But also wanted to point out that in conjunction with the Blue Ribbon Committee, the Twinsburg Chamber of Commerce is also having a community expo that same day at the high school as well. So there will be a chance to see, I think they've got forty or fifty local businesses will be available there, kind of to give out some information on the different services and products that they'll be offering. So it'd be a good way, just a good overall community event, get out, support the schools, school levy committee and hear some students. I know there'll be some presentations, some singing and, and musical performances as well as, you know, the community expo would be a good event too, so.
All you can eat pancakes.
All you can eat pancakes. Attempted to be served by some of us, maybe.
Yes. Flipping, some of them ended up on the ceiling, but they weren't served. Anything further, Miss Langus?
Mr. Felber, I could just provide a little bit of an update. Parents continue to inquire as to stance of concern that I filed with the Ohio High School Athletic Association regarding the girls soccer team. Just to let you know that the meeting is finally scheduled. THSAA and representatives from Strongsville, that meeting will be held on March 18th. Don't have a time or a location yet. I'm grateful that we are finally going to have a chance to sit down across the table and take a look at some film and, and try to get to a resolution as to what happened in that final court game. So again, that's March 18th and I'll provide an update to the board thereafter.
I know that's been a, a trying topic and I know many parents have been concerned
and it just, you know, regardless of the, the outcome, so to speak, that we go to bat for our students and we, we follow a process and that process was laid out and we're just trying to follow it. So I know that's, those efforts are appreciated. Anything further from Miss Langus? All right. The board does have a need for executive session, so I will make the motion that the Board of Education enters into executive session at 9:03 to discuss the employment and compensation of public employees as per the Board of Education Policy 0166A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Slurr?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?